Alright guys, we're gonna start the meeting, six o'clock. At least according to that clock. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? Okay, hearing none. I'd ask for a motion for approval of the regular meeting of July 24th, as well as emergency site visit August 7th.
So moved.
There a second?
There's a second here.
Okay, is there any discussions? Anybody see anything? Art?
No.
Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are going to skip down to old business, because we have so many people here and we don't wanna cause folks to sit all night long. So, is there a spokesperson?
I guess I can kick us off.
Okay.
I have a few words to say. Felicia has something to say, Jeannie has something to say, Shelley has something to follow up with, and there may be other members of the group who choose to also chime in. Felicia, do you want to go first?
I'm sure. Being there and in tax fare, we decided that maybe we should move forward with the half mile of the northern portion of the Quarterline Road. Because with our meeting with Rutland Town, we worked as a neighbor and, two neighbors coming together. A solution was made regarding that. For Rutland Town, because they do not have a grader, and most of their roads are asphalt. So, they were willing to work with Clarendon and us citizens to come up with a solution, which was a proposal to Clarendon, to give them contractor fee to maintain the road. They understand that where the swamp area was, or is, they do know that there's, it needs a lot of fill and to be crowned. So, they were willing to work with cash. They would pay for the fill and have just cash there with the grader. I guess there was a subcommittee meeting and Rutland Town was told not to bother with the proposal. So, we, so you never saw a proposal regarding that. So, as Clarendon taxpayers, we feel that it's not in the best interest of us with you going ahead on this side committee and not seeing what the proposal is and how we can work with not only us Clarendon taxpayers to maintain that road. We're not asking to rebuild it, we're just asking to maintain it. There's a lot of us citizens, Clarendon taxpayers, that use that road on a routine basis. Not only, as I stated before, it's an inlet and an outlet to Rutland City, Rutland Town, and it's also an access to Rutland Hospital. On the road, there's a lot of elderly neighbors that use that road on a regular basis to get to their hospital or to get to the clinics for care. And as a safety issue, not only does the ambulance use it to pick them up if they don't have transportation, but the fire department uses it, the Vermont State Police use it, and the sheriff's department use it. And not only does the sheriff department use it to come through or to take care of whatever citizen cause that they have, disputes or what have you, their staff uses it for transportation to and from work. So, as a community, I think that maybe we could all work together as a group and come up and, you know, look at the proposal. It's contractor fee that Rutland Town was willing to pay Clarendon, contractor fee, to every time that Clarendon plowed or graded the road. It's a half a mile of road, and I don't think that it's a lot to ask of Cash to maintain that. Like I said, we all use it to get to and from work, and the elderly neighbors, they use it to get to their clinics, and there's a volunteer service that comes and uses it to pick someone up to go to dialysis and stage renal disease. So, we, as a community, I stepped forward and we, as the group, the committee, we stepped forward and we came up with a petition. We had an overwhelming response from the neighborhood, Walker Mountain and the Clarendon Springs. They were very receptive to this, because everyone uses it, and they were willing to sign a petition. So, I have a petition here from all the neighbors, including Walker Mountain and including some down on Middle Road, that signed it and would love to have it maintained. We're not asking to have it rebuilt, we're not asking for it to be resurfaced. We're just asking for it to be maintained.
What does your petition say?
The petition states, "The Clarendon citizens sign below requests that the town of Clarendon maintain the gravel portion of the Quarterline, located in Rutland Town. The Clarendon Select Board should negotiate with Rutland Town for adequate payment for services rendered. Emergency vehicles need to be able to easily travel all parts of the Quarterline Road. Rutland Town does own, does not own the equipment needed for gravel roads. The Class Four Road Guidelines state that Quarterline Road's maintenance will be performed when convenient by outside contractors. And thank you for your attention to this issue."
Alright, how many people signed it?
Quite a few. There's sixteen on each page, and I have one, two, three, four, so about five and a half pages.
So, over seventy people.
How much?
Over seventy.
Thank you.
In two weeks.
If we were to put that question out for our next voting period, you'd have to have around a hundred people sign the petition to then put it to all the voters in town.
So, our intent is not to put this out to voters. Our intent is to come back to the Select Board and say, hey, there's a lot of support behind entertaining, or at least looking at the proposal from Rutland Town, which hasn't been considered yet. Now, our intent is not to give anyone a hard time. Our intent is not to, you know, cause undue pressure or, you know, be difficult. Our intent is to come back with additional information that, you know, some Select Board members don't have the benefit of having, and to say, you know, what, you know, what do we all want? We want easy access for emergency services to be able to get to homes, and that really has become even more important lately, because, you know, you've had to do the roadwork. So, putting in the culvert has closed a road, which means emergency vehicles would need to travel that route. And things that have come up, because we've been obviously talking with folks and saying, hey, you know, this is something that's important to us, would you join us in this effort? And as Felicia said, people have been very receptive. They have questions about why wouldn't we even think about, you know, considering the proposal? Why would we just say no, don't bother looking at it? You know, they've said the same things that, you know, we've thought about in terms of, why wouldn't we be a good neighbor? You know, they don't have the equipment. I don't wanna repeat everything that Felicia has said, but we know, they don't have the equipment. They have two miles of gravel road. It would add on a couple of hours of grading. Cash's concern, and rightfully so, is, you know, wanna make sure that I have the material necessary, because that particular part of the road is not in great condition. Rutland Town, you know, you were at the meeting, they said we're not going to upgrade. That's reasonable. All we want is what we had, and, you know, making sure that Cash has what he needs to take care of the road. So, you know, things that, you know, that have come up around that, just in terms of talking with our neighbors, you know, they're asking, you know, the same questions that we're asking. And honestly, part of what bothers us is, you know, we've been told no, that it's not Clarendon's issue, it's Rutland Town's, you know, section of the road. There's no dispute about that. It is their section of road. There's, you know, concern that if Rutland Town decides not to take care of this, plus Rutland Town citizens are affected, because if they can't go down Quarterline Road or access Boardman, they have to travel south. So, the question is, you know, how can we work collaboratively together to have a decent outcome where, you know, we're being good neighbors and we make sure people have the emergency services that they, we need to have, and not have them come up, for example, and then find the road hasn't been plowed, now they have to go back around and reroute? Because we have been able to confirm that emergency services will come the most direct route. So, you know, whether it's a regional ambulance, whether it's the police, whether it's the fire department, other than when ship and hook would be the appropriate fire response team to head north. So, those are all, those are all real issues for us. So, here, some feedback, you know, what people are saying, it's just half a mile, why are we making such, you know, a big deal about this? Why is it that, you know, when we go to work early in the morning, we're noticing that at times the road crew from Clarendon is driving down that half stretch? And Cash, you may not be aware of that, you know? But sometimes the guys are traveling down that half-mile section of road to safely turn around, and they're just picking up their plow. So, you know, why not get paid for it? How, you know, how is it that, you know, when we're hearing it, would add twenty minutes of extra time for plowing, we couldn't figure this out? How is it that we couldn't figure out, if they're providing the material and it would add a couple of hours on, that we couldn't figure this out together? And you all have been talking to neighbors too, because you have concerns. Some of you are looking at this differently than we are, but, you know, some people said, no, you know, I've heard about this from Select Board members, and I'm not interested in signing. And so, you know, we've asked them questions. So, you know, did they explain that Rutland Town doesn't have a grader? They only have two miles of gravel road? That this would really help them out, because they have a new road commissioner who can't admittedly says, "I can't grade a road to save my life. We really could use the help. We've lost our contractors. You know, we prefer, if you're right there, we'd rather, you know, work with you." They also are really concerned about safety of travel conditions, not only for emergency vehicles, because they brought all of that up, but we also have a lot of young high school students that are now driving. And so, we have parents who are saying, if the road isn't gonna be maintained, we're really worried about our kids being on the road. So, we wanna make sure that there's safe travel for them as well. And why now? You know, why after thirty years are we having this difficulty? And so, you know, we explained, here's what Rutland Town has run into, here's what Cash is trying to, you know, trying to balance. But we feel pretty strongly that there's a way of us working together on it. So, it's, it seems like it's, it started out as what, to us, isn't a huge ask, even though we understand it's a bit of a challenge. We still feel really strongly that we could work together on this, and that we could get the best of both worlds. And what we would point out, that we hope you hear as, you know, support, and not in any way us being difficult, is, you know as well as we have, we do that, you know, this started out with one or two people calling way back in February, when, you know, we're having difficulty with the roads. And then around June, there may be a half a dozen of us that came and talked with you. Well, by July, there are about a dozen or more, and then by the time that we had the meeting with Rutland Town, which, you know, they courteously invited us. They didn't have to, but they did, and we were really pleased with that, and they were really gracious, and really listened, we thought, very well to our concerns, and came up with a solution we certainly didn't expect. So, here we are, we're thirty people. And then, the part, you know, that we would want you to know is that it was really crushing and very dismissive to us when the following Monday, the 24th, there was a board meeting. We wanted to come back with, come back to you at a board meeting, so that we could talk with you. And the next thing we know, and rightfully so, it's under other business, you should be talking about it, it came up. Next thing we know, it's like whiplash. All of the sudden, a motion's made, it carries, we don't even wanna entertain them, you know, the proposal. And that was just crushing. Makes us feel like, why, why are we not able to trust our Select Board members to have the conversation with us? We can see things differently, but why not allow us to come? So, here we are, and for two weeks, we've been working on this. We now have seventy people, and there are over seventy people. There is no doubt in our minds that given more time, and again, this is not to pressure you in any way, it's intended to help you see things, you know, from a wide variety of community members. Not all of the people on that petition are from Quarterline Road. What people are saying is, my goodness, why not? Why, you know, what's, what's the harm in exploring this? And why not try it for a year? Rutland Town is willing to negotiate, as we recall, for the rate. So, what they said in the meeting is, we would want Cash to figure out, how much time is this actually gonna take? Is there anything that, you know, could be unanticipated that he needs to add into the rate? You know, make sure you're thinking about things like wear and tear on the vehicle. So, a lot of the things Cash that you have brought up, they were mentioning as well, to make sure that, you know, you felt supported in thinking through, you know, what you would need to make this happen. And if indeed, you don't have the crew to manage overall, I know George has brought it up, and we've all had conversations about it. If it means that at some point in time, Cash needs to add another person or a half a person, or there's per diem, or what, whatever the right solution or combination of solutions might be, you know, it's probably time to look at that. We also know that, you know, the idea of other townspeople asking for the same thing has come up. Horton Road, I know Cash, or we know Cash is concerned about that. It's a different situation though, because they're in the town. This is another town contracting. And if another town contracts and you're not able to manage that, then it seems perfectly reasonable that you might have to say no at that time and come back and say, here's the situation, we've got another request, here's how I think it could or couldn't fit into the budget, so that at least there's a conversation. I think, you know, I guess in closing, what, what we would want you to, you know, think about is, people talk. You know, we're all talking about this because we're worried, and we feel like we have a very valid concern, that we would like you to reconsider the situation and explore it further. Obviously, we want you to say yes. But the question really is, you know, after hearing this, after hearing from more citizens, which we felt was important, you know, will the Select Board reconsider? Will the Select Board say no, and tell us what you've told us twice now, which is, not our problem, you figure it out. There's not a great solution here if Rutland Town says no, which they could do. Is that the outcome, that we go back to the seventy people we've talked to so far, and have those seventy people talk to more people? That's not what we want. What we want is to be able to go back to them and say, you know what? It was a little bit of a bumpy start, and we were all on different pages. We saw things differently, but we came back. Our Select Board listened to us, they gave the courtesy of this conversation here this evening. We really appreciated it, and you know what? They reconsidered, and they said, we can work through this together, because we're neighbors, we're community, and that's what we want, to be able to take back to the community. So, that is, that is our ask, that's what we would ask you to consider, and that's what we hope that we will be able to walk away with this evening.
I think that the first time we had a meeting, a smaller group actually,
Very small.
And it looked like a majority of the board didn't want to consider at that time. But, there was no actual vote, because there was two of us who was gonna go to their meeting, and we wanted to hear what they had said. The following meeting, when we came back, we had other issues and we discussed all that. And when we, we normally do this at the end of every meeting, do you have a concern? Do you have a concern? Do you have a concern? Well, when we brought up, at that time, what had taken place at the meeting of Rutland Town, excuse me, then it was stated, and if you looked at the PEG TV clipping, you'll see where the, we had this discussion was, well, let's make a final decision on this. And that's where it went. So, there was, that was not on an agenda?
Nope.
Or any of this kinda stuff. That's how that came up. So, I just wanted to get that out there first.
We are, not to interrupt you, but we do understand that, and we take no issue with the fact that it wasn't actually on the agenda. It clearly comes under other business, that's appropriate protocol. We have no difficulty with that at all. Where we have difficulty is, instead of tabling the motion and saying, or not even, or just holding back on the motion and saying, wait, you know what? We've had people come, and there were like thirty people at the meeting, you know, we think we should have a bigger, more robust conversation with them. It just doesn't sit well. And we would want you to know that. But appreciate you mentioning it.
Obviously, because of when, I see you have the petition with seventy people, and I'm sure that, you know, if you went out throughout the town, you'd get more than seventy people, especially people living up on a hill here. I think that what we should do is, Art, do you have something?
I think we have somebody else that wanted to present.
We do have Jeannie that wanted to speak as well, that should be.
I've lived on Quarterline Road for thirty-five years, and I, I wanna say thank you to the Clarendon Road Crew, because you do a great job with the snow and the ice. I really, it's been great. This past winter was trying, it was difficult, and it was only difficult on the Rutland Town side. I had never been to a Select Board meeting, let alone a road commissioner meeting, and the first time was at Rutland Town. I was impressed with the turnout, the people that, from Rutland Town that were there, and the conversation that ensued, because after discussion, it turned to collaboration, and that, you know, bouncing off different ideas, what could be done. So, the proposal that could've come to Clarendon and to you, Cash, and the rest of the Select Board seemed fair. I was shocked to hear that Rutland Town only had less than two miles of dirt road. Let's turn the tables. If it were Clarendon, why would you have a grader? You wouldn't need one, you'd contract it out. Well, that didn't work so great for Rutland Town this past year. I, I appreciate that your staff might be less than ideal. I mean, business people that a lot of us had been. Money talks, nobody walks. But, it's more than just convenience, it is safety. Even in West Rutland with a new ambulance satellite, if they can't come up even Boardman Hill Road, they're still gonna hit that dirt section, that half-mile. And if they get that far and then have to turn around and come down through Schoolhouse Hill Road, or however to get in, that takes time. I, I truly believe that if we can be good neighbors, work with Rutland Town, you know, try it for a year. Discuss. Come up with something that works for all, and give it a try for a year. If it doesn't work, we tried it. And we'll feel as if our concerns are being heard. I, I'm here because I love where I live. This is my home. My life has changed a lot in the last two years, and at least seventy-five percent of the time, when I leave my driveway, I head north. I will tell you in the wintertime, you do a good job with Walker Mountain Road, but the way the road is, I'm a skier, there's two, at least, turns in the road that are counter-fall line, that if you're not, and I go slower, you know, I'm not, I've been around for a while. I still feel much safer on the Quarterline Road. I stopped using the Quarterline Road for basically mid-May to the end of June, A, because I have a 2013 vehicle and wanted to keep all my parts on the vehicle. And I'm gonna say something that I maybe shouldn't, but I will. George Levatt, a long time ago, was the road commissioner in Rutland Town. His wife worked for Michael and I for a long time. He's turning in his grave. He, that road, when George and others passed his time. It had been maintained, and then to hear from Rutland Town and their road commissioner exactly what happened, it's understandable. Their contractor, and in the end of the season, was seven weeks late in coming in. And I'm concerned for you guys, turning around your trucks in the cutout that you, or the dugout that you did, that half-mile. I've managed to get through it, but it would've been a lot better if I know our road crew could do that work. Done.
Is anybody else?
Yep, I do. I think one of the points that I really wanna make is that Clarendon, Clarendon didn't listen to Rutland Town's proposal. You just said no immediately. And like Teresa said, it's a collaboration, alright? At least listen to what they have to say. There's no harm in that, but you didn't have the courtesy for that. And Rutland Town had the courtesy to hear from all of us, and the Rutland Town folks are here, because they were gracious enough to give us their time. So, but, in the meantime, I put together a V-Trans map to show you, you had a culvert out on the Creek Road, and you had a culvert out on the south end of Walker Mountain Road, both at the same time. Here's your fire department, and the future ambulance service here in West Rutland. How were they going to get to the houses just north of Williams's house, with the road being closed and the culvert being out? And I went down through there, it wasn't just the culvert, you were ditching the roads, which, Grant, I totally get that, alright? Nobody's disappearing, Wayne wanted me to do this to the TV, alright? So, that's what I'm doing here. But my point there is, this is the section of road we're talking about. This is the section of road, alright? So, anyway, you closed off two main entrances, they had used Schoolhouse Hill Road for the north end of the Quarterline Road. So, that's all I'll say.
Can I be a comment there?
You guys wanna see my poster?
Go ahead, Cash. Within our road crew, anytime we're doing a culvert and the road is dug up, if there's a fire ambulance or something, immediately that'll be filled back in, just covered to get the emergency vehicles through, back and forth, whatever it takes. So, anytime a road's closed... So, anytime a road's closed for a, you know, ditch across to put a culvert in. That's what we have in our profile agenda. Something happens, immediately take the dirt and put it back in, just to get the ambulance or fire truck or whatever emergency response vehicle is in that case. Except for like Creek Road.
Yeah.
We just did that. That was a massive, you know, that couldn't be.
We're not denying any of that.
Yeah.
And we get it, you know, and we appreciate all that.
And the other-
I'm just saying, there are, there are two main, major points being done at the same time right there. And, and we're talking about this little chunk of road that-
We talked about that with our, in our meetings down in the town with the crew. If something happens, we're all on the same page immediately. Just for another comment on it, that road, section of road is in tough shape. And I see that the condition is in, that thing needs to be graded like once a month.
Well, I think if you have listened to Rutland Town's proposal, Dave Sears is willing to support you with as much material, trucks, equipment that he has at his disposal. He's willing to work with Clarendon. And they're willing to pay you FEMA rate. And it sounds like FEMA rate-
Do you know what FEMA rate is?
No, I don't. But that could be negotiable, is, is my point. But Rutland Town is so ready to work with Clarendon. And Clarendon is just being, you know, pretty obstinate and not even listening to what they have to propose. And that's all we're asking right now is have, sit down and have a business discussion with businessmen, you know? It's, you know, we know, you know, their time's valuable. We get that. We understand that. But Rutland Town was gracious enough to listen to all of us that have been traveling that road. And the precedent has been set that Clarendon has plowed that road for how many different road commissioners? But probably for the last twenty-five or twenty-eight years, that road had been plowed by Clarendon. And even this past winter, your guys may say they don't go down to Pete Billings' driveway and turn around. I go out pretty early in the wintertime to go skiing and the road had been plowed and it had been plowed by a large truck, uh, 'cause you could tell it had been winged back and there's duly tracks in the snow. And they're turning around in Pete's driveway and coming back up. Do they do it all the time? Absolutely not. But they did do it a couple of times. And like Jeannie said, turn around in the Rutland Town, turn around, you know, that's, you know, in a big truck. So, anyway.
And then going to work early in the morning, also being on call during the night when the plows aren't going through at two, three o'clock in the morning. For me, that's the safest. I've lived there for thirty-five years. That's the safest route for me to get to the hospital. And if it's icy or whatever, you always have the grass or something to hold on to until you get, um... Once you get to the Rutland Town side, because it's macadam, they usually salt it so you don't have to worry about it because you can have traction and get down through with no problem. Before, when I first moved up on the Quarterline, that road was closed. It was a goat's path and it was closed for the longest time. I mean, people, my neighbors north of me, they used to pull people out in the spring with a tractor. And for years, when I was young and thought that I could get away with anything, going down Walker Mountain was nothing. It, you know, to put it in first, go, go down first, the big hill on the Quarterline and then Walker Mountain. Never thought twice about anything. Well, now it's a stress test. Um, every time I go down there, because as Jeannie says, there's a fault. You have the, um, the ice going right across. And as you know, I get out there before you. Um, when I did use that on a routine, um, going down early in the morning, sometimes I would see the road crew going up. I mean, if it's icy or whatever, I'm in the middle of the road. And then Schoolhouse Hill Road is not a picnic either. You have that corner by Parkers that I've gone off in the ditch in first gear. And then you have the big hill. And if a car is coming out of a driveway on the big hill, there's no stopping. It, it doesn't matter how slow you go in first gear. So, that's the safest for twenty-four-seven for me to get to the hospital and to get back. And, um, because I'm getting too old for those white knuckle rides.
I think it's important to know that when we were at the meeting with Rutland Town, that they're going to be ditching the side of the Quarterline Road all the way down through on the, on the west side. I guess it would be, yeah. So, that's in the plans for, for, for taking care of that. So, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of material coming out of there 'cause it was all gravel that got washed into it. But, yeah, on the other hand, you mentioned that the road's in terrible shape. Well, we're happy with terrible shape. We just wanna be able to travel through terrible shape.
Well, where I was getting with that is, like I said, about every month, six months, that section of road should be graded.
And, and if, if that's the, if that's the case, then I would make that with Rutland Town to say in order for us to, you know, whatever their proposal is, is it, is it, you know, that, we're, we're happy with two times a year, believe me.
Two times a year honestly has been fine. So, even though we appreciate your perfectionism here.
Yeah.
It's what makes you good at what you do, right?
Well, it's not just me. It's the team.
Well, but-
Guys.
We're not asking for that. Just make it passable, for goodness sakes.
And just, and plow it when it's ever gotta be plowed and it's on a per diem basis. And whatever, you know, if you plow ten times, you get paid for ten times. If you, if you plow twenty-five, you get paid for twenty-five. It's a no win, I mean, it's a, it's not a losing situation, at, at least in our minds, for getting paid for service. And yep, it does take a little bit of extra time. But, you're also putting, uh, that big truck that does plow, you're putting it down there a little bit further to be a lot safer to turn it around and bring it on back. Because if I'm not wrong, didn't one of the plow trucks go off trying to turn around in that section there? I don't know if it was yours or not.
No, I'm aware.
There was a large truck that went.
Knock on wood, we're clean this year.
By using, trying to turn around there. So, anyway, it's, it's just something that, you know, we're, we're obviously very passionate about it. We don't really want any upgrades. We're not asking for any of that. Understand where you come from, from the standpoint of saying it should be probably graded more often. I wouldn't disagree with that. But we're looking for the two times a year and keeping it plowed out and you guys getting paid for it. Simple.
And then maybe if Rutland Town does bring the fill like they said they would and work with you to crown it, and then maybe, you know, it could go at least three months. Because when it was, when Rutland Town did grade it, we thought after the rain that weekend that the holes would be back. Actually, it wasn't. It was, you know, longer, a couple of months before those holes came back. And with all the rain that we had gotten this summer.
And it really is not bad.
The few times that I sat up there, I was surprised at how many vehicles, you know. The most I sat there was one hour.
I put a trail camera up at the top of our driveway. Now, it's not the greatest counter.
Yeah.
But in the course of two weeks, I had eight thousand images.
Whoa.
Okay? So, I sorted through about twenty-eight hundred of those, which was roughly two days worth of traffic. And it's hundred, hundred and twenty-five cars per day. It had delivery vehicles. It had old brick. It had the sheriff's department going south. Had the sheriff's department going north. So, it's, you know, we had a cyclist. We had some runners. But I didn't see any deer. I didn't see any bobcats. Nothing cool.
No turkey.
No turkeys.
You didn't see the one bear?
Yeah. But my point, you know, and this is a trail cam, you know, that we have set up on the tree at the top of the driveway. So, that's just, you know, a rough idea and so.
And I can, and I can say, because I do ride my bicycle and walk on a routine basis. And with the road being closed, the Quarterline, the traffic had increased. You know, on that road. You'd go in Schoolhouse and using it for the inlet, outlet.
Art, do you, uh, wanna make a comment?
I don't work with the road crew. So, I have to believe what, if Cash tells me that they don't have time to do this road, I have to believe him. And I've talked to previous road commissioner. And he says, no way. He says, there's absolutely no reason why Rutland Town can't take care of its own road. He did also say that if we do this piece, how about Boardman Hill? We're right there. That, but that's, he says, that's what's gonna be next because Rutland Town is-
We brought it up.
Okay, so he-
That's the unfortunate thing is we wish you had been able to be here to hear this, which is why we really would like-
But I haven't had, I haven't had anybody tell me that it's a good idea. And I've talked to-
You just had seventy people telling you it's a good idea.
I'm telling you, up till tonight, I haven't had anybody tell me that it's a good idea.
That's fair.
Nobody.
How many people do you know that live on the road?
I know a lot of people who live in town and they say, and they say, I can't get the road crew to fill a pothole on my road. Why should we do Rutland Town's?
And the question is, why are they not getting their potholes filled?
Because the road crew doesn't have time.
More people on the road.
They'll get to it.
We have a question back here.
I'm sorry, Carol Wylston. We're talking about time. We're talking about safety.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good point.
Well, bring the safety up to Rutland Town.
We did.
We did.
Then they should be, then they should be-
And they wanna work with Clarendon.
Well, then they can, there's a million, there's a million contractors out there that-
They know.
They can't get them.
That was-
And especially today with the flood.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I think what we're missing is that we're all trying to collaboratively work together. And I think we're shutting out Rutland Town because we're saying, it's your problem. That's not the way the world works these days. We need to work together.
If businesses work that way, Amazon, GE, then they certainly would be closed down by now.
I think what's, what's hard, Art, for us, and even though, you know, thank you for saying what you just said in terms of, this is what I've been hearing. And here is why, you know, here is why I believe what I believe. Very helpful. Not something I certainly understood previously. But now we're bringing additional information to the select board that we have the benefit of from, you know, Rutland Town. And I don't know if the other road commissioner had the benefit of that information. They weren't at the meeting. So, how they can speak to that, I don't know. You know, that's based on historical information. We're talking about, you know, current information. And we are talking about, and we had three contractors. We had, uh-
Beldon.
Beldon, Hathaway, and Sears. 'Cause we said, how much time, you know, are we adding on? Are we being unreasonable? And, you know, you may see this a little bit differently, but this is what we were told by three people, is it would add two hours of grading onto the time. That's four hours a year. And twenty minutes of time onto plowing. So, hopefully you can understand us sitting here going, how could we not, how could we not work through this when it's been done in the past? And they're driving over that section of road and just not dropping the plow. That's-
Now, are you talking, are you talking we're gonna plow all the way to the stop sign?
No.
No.
Well, that means, that means Rutland Town has to plow from the stop sign to the dirt portions?
They do.
Then why can't they go any further? Why do we have to do it?
They haul salt on their trucks. And it's sand road. You don't put salt on a sand road, Art.
I agree.
It does not happen.
But they can plow it. They don't have to put sand or salt down, but they can plow it.
And it turns into ice. Now we're back to the safety issue that you got an ice skating rink down through there, Art. You're not listening to what people are telling you.
I listen to what people are telling me. I knew that. I knew, I live on a dirt road and I know they don't put salt on it.
You're not listening to what's happening and everything else. And I'm gonna tell you, the road commissioner that you talked to, 'cause there's only one other road commissioner left alive, from Clarendon.
There's two.
Two.
Who's the second one?
Father and son.
Daryl.
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 And Nor.
Okay, well, Daryl.
And, and Nor.
Daryl was never road commissioner as far as I was concerned anyway.
No, he closed off the road.
You know, so-
When it was twenty-five below zero and wouldn't let me get through.
But, you know, they, uh, you know, they just, they didn't have a, a, a idea of what was going on either. Neither one of them. So. It's a story.
I made a comment. I made a phone call to two contractors. And both of them said they would be interested, work with Rutland Town for plowing, grading, and doing-
So, so maybe that's the communication you have with Rutland Town to say, hey, here's the proposal that we have. This is what we have. We can't do it or whatever the case, whatever, whatever you do. And say, I have contacted Joe Schmo or whoever and saying they're more than willing to pick up the slack on that thing. And they don't know. It's gotta come from you guys. It can't come from us.
That's what it takes, where I can make that communication.
But why wouldn't that already have happened? This could have happened-
Because-
If folks had listened to the proposal. It could have happened. That's our point. This has gotten so big. It started with one or two. It grew to six. We're now at seven, over seventy people over something that should have happened, you know, in just a reasonable conversation.
There was another hand up here.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, no. I'm just, Carol Wyl, I don't live on Quarterline. I live on Walker Mountain.
Yeah.
And I guess what I'm hearing is, is that people just want to be able to talk. And Cash, you just said that you had talked to, um-
Contractors.
Contractors.
Yes.
So, get together then one more time with Rutland Town, with, with Clarendon Board and the people that are involved and try to hash it out. Because they're talking safety and they are taxpayers and they're residents of Clarendon. So, give it one more shot. Everybody talk, have a meeting, and, and try that. Rather than just trying, I, I get the impression that there's a standoff. And there shouldn't be a standoff when, when people are coming for safety or there's enough of us that want, you know, you want you to, guys to listen. So, I'm just saying, talk one more time. Bring that suggestion because it, it sounds like Rutland Town would go along with it. But maybe together as a board figuring it out the last, for, for one more shot.
I, I'll have the conversation around town whether it be the select board, road commissioner. But I, I would think, I would have that conversation with the select board of Rutland Town or the road commissioner, both, all, everything to get all parties together.
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
That's-
And that's the whole point of the petition.
But I, I, in my stance as road commissioner, if I have an issue with something, you find the resources. If I can't find it, I even ask Katie, let's work on this. What can we do? Where can we draw for information and stuff? I would, I would think that they're, they would go do it. So-
They did that. They told us at Rutland Town, at the meeting.
That they tried to get contractors?
Yes, sir, they did.
I mean, it's in their meeting, it's in their meeting minutes all the way back last fall.
I had, I had two contacts and they said they were willing to do that.
We have one more question over here.
There's one up and back there.
Yes, I know.
So, Dave Sears admitted to being extremely new at his job at that meeting we had with them in July. So, you with experience could be a very much-
I don't have much experience.
Mary, well, be a guiding hand though to this guy 'cause he came out of Rutland City DPW and none of them get along with anybody from my understanding. So, my point there is that, you know what?
If that's what it takes. I, you know, and I don't, I kinda hate to step on somebody else's toes.
But you're not.
They're asking for help.
If they're asking for help, I had no problem.
They're asking for help.
Danny, you have a?
Well, I just think the issue basically was, the select board basically said no. They didn't even wanna get the, listen to a proposal when they probably should've just listened to a proposal. And me as a business person, I have a pocket full of suppliers. But then the guy down the road on the other side of town has a pocket full, in the same business, has a pocket full of different suppliers. So, if you can put heads together, um, just because you know people. He may not know people.
Is that called networking?
Yeah, that's basically, yeah.
There we go.
But that's all these people in the town are asking for. And they sorta hit a stone wall when you don't listen to them and you didn't even wanna listen to the other town's proposal. Um, I think I would've just been open to that. And it wouldn't have come to this point here. And you could have a simple conversation. Not that, not that you said, not that you'd be doing it or anything, but, um, but it would come to a solution.
George, you have any? Do I have any? Well, I live on Quarterline Road and I've been trying to do a, I guess you'd call it a dance to not be considered in, in a position that might not be fair in some respects. I mean, these folks are neighbors I see frequently quite, you know, on the road. I mean, these folks are neighbors I see frequently, quite, you know, on the road, when you say hi and all of that. I use the road, my wife uses the road, my daughter uses the road. And our sister, her sister, my sister-in-law has been using it to get to the hospital for two years. And it is the safety issue. And I understand the concerns that were expressed by the board members that were not interested in listening to the proposal. I mean, they can't say the reasons weren't valid, but on the other hand, what would it have hurt to listen to it? I guess that's my only comment.
Along those lines, um, I agree with you, uh, with having Cash and maybe one other select board member. Just sit down and you can pass on information with contractors and things like this. We took a, a vote here, and it was a three-two vote, not to continue with this. So, I think that's where the board stands at this point. However, if Cash is willing to go with another select board member down to Rutland Town and he can pass on information, contact information and all this stuff, maybe, because I know Dave, I worked with his father for a lot of years at CV, uh, this is a new job for him and he's just learning. So, you know, you, you have some information that might be, because they don't, uh, have that many dirt roads and stuff, so they're not really involved with it that much, where we, on the other hand, are. So, I think that is, let's take that step and we'll try and set up a time where you can, and you take one select board member with you, so you have two set of ears.
So, the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, they have a highway committee. Um, and it would be great if that could go to the highway committee, because I'm sure there are some of us who would like to also be in attendance.
I don't have a problem with him talking to him either, but the, the reason we said we didn't wanna send a letter was because, at the time, we were told, from you two guys that were supposedly at the meeting, that they only, they were gonna give a proposal for our road crew to do it. And we said, we, our road crew didn't have time. That's why we sent the letter. It's not that we aren't, don't wanna listen to him. It's not that Cash shouldn't help him if he, if they know, if he knows somebody, a contractor that can do it. But at the time, we were told that their, their proposal was for us to do the road. And that's why we said no. Don't send us a letter.
And, and to spend time on a proposal and stuff like that, I mean, did it take up probably a whole meeting or three hours, whatever?
Do you understand how hard it is for us to swallow that we can't figure out four hours in a year? Do you understand how hard it is for us to swallow that the road crew travels over that section of road and they can't add twenty minutes on? Do you understand that's our sticking place?
We have a question here.
Um, in the time thing, my question is, is, is the lack of time in the summer to do the grading or is it lack of time in the winter to do the plow?
Uh, you know what the biggest issue is? We gotta figure it out now with the new tandem truck, of going up there with the two, two full loads. And he is totally empty. That means he's gonna come back and get a part load to finish our own town roads.
And we always did.
And, well, we did, but that's why we're trying to be more efficient with the bigger truck. And instead, and I, I, it's, you, we, we can go on and on all night long.
You don't use sand anywhere near like, like we used to in this, in the town of Clarendon. Use a lot more salt, but you know, use a lot more sand. And there's no reason to use salt in the town of Clarendon. The reason other towns use salt on their paved roads is because they don't want sand going into their septic units and everything else. Rutland Town, Rutland City, any of the rest of these, any of that sand that goes into their drainage, goes right through their, their sewage treatment plants. Costs them money to get rid of them. So they use, they use the salt, cause salt goes through, doesn't, doesn't cost them nothing.
Sorry, you recommend we use?
We use sand salt. We used to use sand salt all the time. I've got three generations, myself and two other ones, that worked on town roads. And we always plowed and sanded a road. Paved road, dirt road. We put a scoop of sand in, a scoop of salt in, with the three scoops of sand that we put on the truck, away we went. And we could go anywhere we needed to go and everything else. And if we didn't get back to a road for two or three hours, then it had some grit on it.
With the salt-sand mix.
With the salt-sand mix. But my other question is, is in the plowing times, I haven't figured it out yet, because we have fifty-seven acre, there's fifty-seven miles of road on the docket that we supposedly maintain, okay? And I asked you this question once before. What does, and I know what the answer is to it. What does the state suggest plowing and sanding time to plow and sand a mile of road? Or how fast should they be traveling on a road? And the answer is fifteen miles an hour. Now you take three of you guys on the road and divide fifty-seven miles.
You don't divide fifty-seven miles, it actually, it's a little bit high in that figure, but just for you to figure, with the sixty miles, you're covering a hundred and twenty miles of road.
You're right. But, still, if you take and divide that out by three of you, it shouldn't take you, each of you doing a quadrant of town, it shouldn't take you any more than two to two and a half hours to plow your sections, plow and sand your section of town, and then be started on it all over again. And I've seen times on the Quarterline Road where we didn't even see the town plowed going down as far as town, end of town, and turned around till one o'clock. And you started at four o'clock. So my question is, where the hell were ya?
We're not sitting in the garage, I'll tell you.
I, I, I believe you're not sitting in the garage, but, um, the, the roads don't get covered the way they should get covered, anyway.
You have a question?
In conclusion, Cash, our road commissioner, is going to be in touch with someone from Rutland Town. If we cannot come to some kind of an agreement, we have the option of going and getting thirty more signatures? This is, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. We have the option of getting thirty more signatures on a petition to pursue this even further? Is that, am I wrong?
The first thing you should do, I'll give you some advice.
Yes.
Contact the Secretary of State and make sure that the wording is correct. Because if it's not worded correctly, we can't put it on the ballot.
Okay.
So we have to go through putting this on a ballot for a half a month?
She asked a question. She asked a question and I, I gave you some advice.
Right, I, I was just asking-
Yeah.
If we cannot come to a resolution of some kind.
That is, that is, that is an alternative.
Okay, thank you.
But the door, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did you have something?
I just, I would hope that, because Cash said he would meet, you guys, two other board members and some of the people that are in the commission, I mean, that brought this petition. I would hope that, I like the idea of like, try it for a year, but I mean, I would hope that it would get solved in the positive for, for the town.
And we all do.
Which means the people, yeah.
And we all want that.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
We all want that.
So I think, but Cash said he would do it, he would need, so.
It'd be, have, have to be one select board member, because open meeting law. Have to be one select board meeting with myself, because of open meeting law.
Oh, okay.
If you had three, then you have to-
It's gotta be one.
Warn the meeting and all that kind of stuff.
Don't get me wrong, it's not, I don't, I don't want the road to not get fixed. You know, I, I understand the safety thing. Uh, yeah, fix it, it needs to be fixed. It's Rutland Town's road.
But we have to get over that.
But it's Clarendon citizens that are using.
I understand that.
Your job is not to clear and sand the roads, not to plow the roads. Your job is to make sure that Rutland Town citizens get where they need to go safe.
Yes, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Not hanging around, banging around with machinery and equipment clearing stuff. Making sure the roads are in condition, that Rutland Town citizens can get where they need to go safe.
I agree with you.
That's the job.
And Clarendon.
I agree with you. But there's two thousand voters in this town. You guys got seventy people.
But we can get more.
You can probably get more, but I'm telling you, all the people that I've talked to say that, that we shouldn't be doing it.
But did you give them all the information?
Yeah.
I gave them all the information I had.
Which is not all the information.
Which is that you would get paid for it.
Because you were not open to the information.
And you didn't read, you didn't-
But these are the same people that say, "I can't get my pothole filled."
Well, we can.
Well, we can.
Build a, build a-
My driveway.
Your pothole more important than our pothole?
Yeah, and we had plenty of potholes.
Cause their, cause their potholes in Clarendon.
Why?
But we're also paying you guys taxes. And we, we don't have any kids.
Right.
So where are our taxes going?
Yeah.
Basically to the road maintenance and to the road crew.
The other part of it is, why would, why would we look at it like, well, they're not getting their potholes fixed, so you shouldn't get your potholes fixed? And by the way, your potholes aren't even in Clarendon.
Yeah, I think we're in elementary school.
Why wouldn't it be, how is it that we can work together to make sure the potholes are filled? And if that means Cash needs another person, if we need to increase back to four people or four diam, we don't need to go down, why it can, why it can't happen. I get recruitment, I do it as part of my living. But there are ways to solve it, and I think that's all that we're saying is, instead of continuing to go down this path of, "It must be this way or it must be that way," the reason we came back the way that we did is to figure out how to get to AND. And if AND looks like Cash at the highway committee meeting with another select board member that we, some of us who are interested can attend, so that he can share his knowledge and his, you know, contacts, awesome. If it means that, for some reason, the wheels come off that and it's considering the proposal that, you know, they would like to pay Clarendon, then we should be open to that, instead of just shutting it down. That's all we're saying. We don't want to be argumentative, we don't want to be difficult. And like I said at the beginning, we wanna leave here and go, you know what? We came out of this together. That's what we wanna tell people. So, you know, we're partway there, but every time we keep hearing, "Well, we can't because," we shouldn't be pitting, not that you're saying this, Art, I don't, I'm using this as an example cause I don't think this is what you're saying. But we shouldn't, we shouldn't be pitting one Clarendon resident against another around potholes. We should be saying, "There are potholes. What do we do? How do we help Cash get the help he needs in his department to take care of all the potholes? Whether they're in Clarendon or not."
So in my, uh, highway report, there's gonna be, and the rest of the select board don't know about it, but they're gonna request put out for hiring for a part-timer.
Very cool, Cash.
Already.
So happy to hear that. So happy to hear that.
And then maybe if the Rutland Town proposal is high enough for pay, that would help pay for that person.
Did you have a big time?
Uh, just a quick comment. You mentioned Boardman Hill. Rutland Town's working with West Rutland, and West Rutland's maintaining that section of Boardman Hill for them. And just the way that Rutland Town is paying menden per dam to plow some of the stuff up off a town line road, so the two towns aren't crisscrossing one another. So, Rutland Town's working with other, you know, communities around them.
Well, like I said, I, I don't have a problem. It, it's just-
Just sharing information, Art, that's all. You know, cause you, you mentioned Boardman Hill and West Rutland is, you know, cause they've got the equipment. And Rutland Town asked them and so they've got an agreement worked out.
We want this to be a positive outcome for all of us.
Well, I do too. I'd love, love to have it all hunky-dory.
And so, at the other end, if you don't have, you know, enough staff, then use the money. Hire someone per dam.
Cash, can, can, if we ask Katie to get in touch with Rutland Town, is there a possibility that you can?
I can make a phone call.
Yeah, you can, you can call it direct.
I want it direct.
This week?
Yeah, yeah. I'll do it tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Okay. And then figure out-
That's no problem. They got a highway committee, that's the best thing to do, then the highway committee can take it to the select board. And you gotta do that chain of command.
Yep. And then, uh, you know, uh, if you go to a meeting, or even if it's just a conversation, I'd like to have, make sure that you get another select board member here-
Yep.
-uh, involved, another set of ears. But sometimes, home like this, you hear something, but you don't hear something. So, are you trying to say you're getting old?
Mature, just mature.
Still throwing like bull, though. You're still a youngster. All right.
That's what I'll do.
So, we'll take this next step and, um, we will report back to everyone. If you guys, uh, I think Art made a good suggestion, get in touch with the Secretary of State, find out the correct verbiage for a possible, um, petition to put something on a- You'll have to, you'll have to re-get everybody to re-sign.
Yep.
If you change, if you change the wording.
And they, and they will tell you, e- every pa- every page has to have that wording on it, so that-
Yeah, that's not a problem. Everyone was really receptive.
We are very hopeful that we don't have to go that route.
Oh, but I mean, you do your job, we'll do our job and see if we can't-
I'll take it on my shoulders, I have no problem.
Yeah.
Well, we'll attend the select, or the highway committee meeting too.
Yes, we will. So we all hear the same wording?
Right.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Now, this wasn't easy, but we appreciate it very much.
That's why we get the big bucks.
Is it? We did not know that, Michael Flutten.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Play in the rain.
We appreciate it.
Be safe driving home, guys.
You as well.
Bye.
I wanna thank you guys. I had the delivery of siding from La Valley come up from the baseball field.
I met him at the bottom.
And I had, I had contacted Josh Webster of Primo to let them know that they really should've come up Schoolhouse Hill.
Hell, no problem.
Thank you.
We're just doing ditching, the road wasn't. It's just that, we like closed road for safety.
Oh, definitely, definitely. But thanks, I-
You're welcome.
My house is looking great.
Good. Semper Fi.
Semper Fi.
I like that. All right. You laughed, was it something I said? Road Commissioner, do you have a report for us?
Well, first of all, as many know, the Walker Mountain Road finally got paved and shouldered. Um, line striping is due the first part of September, which is next week here. Um, with the state scheduling, we'll see how that goes. We've been working on Quarterline Road, as you just heard, um, with, on our grant, GM, yeah, GM RP. Uh, we had three segments and that was completed. And then the last thing, as I just mentioned, we are looking at, presented to the select board of a, uh, part-time or full-time employee.
Part-time, full-time?
Part-time or full-time, um, depends on how we wanna, you know, pursue it.
I personally, as one member, think we should have one more full-time employee down there.
Well, I've made my thoughts pretty clear on it on a couple of meetings. And that's no casting no spurs into you, uh, Cash. I know-
Derek, let me say something. There's four of us. And I don't know how to say this publicly, but-
Sometimes for too many.
Yeah.
We're four.
And, uh, now I'm starting to, kinda the wound's gone over now, so.
You, as a road commissioner who deal with this every day, what's your opinion?
That's why he's asking. Yeah. That's what I'm asking. A part-time or full-time employee depends on the individual. It's not gonna be just any go small off the street.
Yeah, you're gonna have to do some looking, I'm sure.
Serious looking.
You could say, like, part-time with the potential to become full-time.
Full-time. That was the wording I was looking for.
I have noticed that right in the back of room, there's a guy that operates heavy equipment, but he's probably not available. Oh, hi, mate.
This is not, the part-timer's Bob.
Yeah.
Um, so, with that being said, a lot of times I get it through the state. I don't know if any, I don't think any of the rest of you get it. Is any town that's hiring somebody, they have a definition of...
What the job is.
Yep, job description.
Yep.
And I can go back to my emails. I wanted to bring it forth to the select board first, before I did that, to move it on to Katie. Of get a couple scenarios of different towns, how they rode it up, and go from there.
Well, you know, just from my observation, with three of you, all good for blast on whatever, you do very well together. There's no question about that. But, you know, somebody can get sick, somebody can get hurt, somebody, whatever, and that to me i- is a, then you got two that are working harder. And that, that's always been my concern. Uh, and, and I also know that with four people and the equipment situation that you have, probably there'll be time, then, you, what am I gonna do with this guy?
Derek, don't you think though... Happens sometimes.
Yeah.
Don't you think that if you put a proposal out there for a full-time employee, you'll get more responsible people applying for the job as a, as a...
Put it both ways. So some people, you might find an older semi-retired person that don't wanna work full-time that would be interested in part-time.
He's right on that.
Because of maybe social security or whatever, or just, he's busted his butt all his life, and I just want something to do to get out of the house.
So how would you arrange that? In other words, if you had a part-time guy, say, come in three days a week?
We, while we're probably during the winter time, we'd probably be on a, almost like an on-call basis of, you know, cause we know kind of in advance where the snows come in there, just like the rain somewhat. And sometimes that part-time might work the full week.
Well, Mr. Kerman, I moved that we go have Cash go full steam ahead of, seeing what we can do to select or find somebody.
Alright, there's motion made. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing now in all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, anything else, Cash?
No, Katie's gonna light us some, some other stuff, but as we move on.
Um...
Guest or all, Dan's here.
Yeah, Dan, are you a guest, Dan, or are you just hanging out? Okay.
Uh, are you on the Coal River issue?
Yeah, I just wanted to see what we...
We got that under new business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, new business. There you go. Coal River.
I can start it off if you'd like.
Yeah.
Oh, Katie's still here.
Yeah, I see. Um, I mean, we had a state visit with Josh up at the, uh, Mill Road Bridge, Old River, and, um, obviously there's some issues going on there with flooding. Um, it's been occurring over the past few years with the floods we've had.
So he directed us to two different funding sources, one being the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, and one being the Flood Resilient Communities Fund. Um, I believe the issue we have is that we don't have a complete river management plan that would allow us to do preventative maintenance yearly. Um, and so the Flood Resilient Community Fund would hopefully provide some funding for us to do that. Um, I reached out to the grant, uh, like, program administrator, and unfortunately, that fund is almost depleted. So they're pushing all these towards FEMA programs. Um, so she put us on the list as an interested town, and would let us know, and there's a notice of funding for that. Um, in the immediate, we have the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, which there's a packet for you guys to look at, and there's, um, like, an overview of the process. But the first step is to send a letter requesting assistance. And this program is more construction-based, um, like, removing, uh, debris-clogged waterways and unstable stream banks.
I'm sorry, you didn't catch the last part.
Where, I think the type of work that we would hope this program would accomplish is to mitigate the debris-clogged waterways and unstabilized stream banks. So I sent out a letter. They provide a template, um, that they require, and I inserted, like, the issues that Clarendon has and the assistance we need. So I leave that in your hands. Dan is a good resource of all the history of the Coal River.
Um... Is this, uh, the request?
That's the letter, if you were to sign it.
Yeah.
And that is with the emergency...
Do you wanna read that quick, or if I can? Uh, "Dear Mr. Tomas Thomason," whatever the hell his name is, "We, uh, request federal assistance under provisions of Section 216 of Flood Control Act of 1950, Public Law 81-516, or Section 403 of Agricultural Credit Act of 1978. Public Law 95-334, to restore damages sustained in Rutland County by flooding disaster D R, in parentheses, D R 4720 that occurred between July 7, 17, to 2003. The additional rainfall that occurred in the weeks after also caused damage, August 3rd through 5th. This work is needed to safeguard lives and property from imminent hazard of debris-clogged waterways and destabilization of stream banks in the Coal River and Otter Creek. The Coal River caused damage to private property and public infrastructure. Clarendon Bridge, in parentheses again, Bridge 14. The Town of Clarendon requests financial and technical assistance in mitigating these natural hazards. We are a municipality with a legal interest in or responding, uh..."
The info.
Yeah, for the values threatened by the watershed emergency. We understand as sponsors of emergency watershed protection measures that our responsibilities will be, will include, uh, contributing a share of project cost as determined by N R C S by providing funds or eligible, uh, services necessary to undertake the activities. Obtaining any necessary real property rights, water rights, and regulatory permits. Agreeing to provide for any required operation and maintenance of the completed emergency measures. We have exhausted our, uh, or have insufficient funding or other resources available to bu- provide adequate relief from applicable hazards. We acknowledge that N R C S will not provide funding for activities undertaken by a sponsor prior to the signing of an agreement between N R C S and the sponsor. The names, addresses, and telephone numbers of the administrative and technical contact persons in our organization are as follows. And administrative contact, of course, is Katie. Technical contact is Cash or Wayne. Please contact them for any additional information that you might need in assessing our request. Sincerely, and then I have to sign it if you board approve this letter. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the letter. It's presented with you to sign it.
Cash seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now in all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Danny, you want a copy of it?
Uh, no.
Um... Are there any other comments you wanna make, Dan, for the, on the record, about Coal River work?
I think just the biggest thing is, we gotta, we gotta have our ducks in a row with that emergent, with that, uh, management plan. And you sort of need, we need to have... See if Shoesbury's willing to go in on it also, because it's basically, it's the same river.
Yep.
And who is, and, um, who you're going with, with, for a consulting agency. You gotta have them ready to get on board, because the problem is, can't wait for the funding to become available and then start looking for these things. It's gotta be, everything's gotta come together. Um, so you gotta take, you look at it from both, both angles. Um, and it may come down to doing an emergency system, or a management system program, without the funding, if it's not, if it doesn't become available. You gotta do something at one point or another. Um, because from what I've seen over the last, since Irene, it's coming back around and snaking, and it's gonna do that. Now it's gonna do the north side of the bridge.
Well, that information that you sent us, uh, it's not, it's not co- a complete maintenance program.
No, no.
But that guy that, that guy that did that...
It sort of, well, it sort of lays it out.
Is he, is he capable of finishing it?
Oh, yeah, he is. He is.
So it might behoove us to get in touch with him and try to at least get a price on what it would cost to, uh, get to the point where we would have...
Sure, sure, and that's the front-end work that we need to do.
It would cost us to get a price.
No, no. And I think we started talking with Evan, uh, Evan Fitzgerald, uh, Evan Fitzgerald Associates.
He's up in Berlaken or anywhere somewhere.
Uh, Wilston, Berlaken, yeah. He's up there somewhere. It's, it's on the dat, is, address is on that, uh, those reports.
Has there been any discussion with Shoesbury yet?
Uh, I don't know if, did you go that far? Did it get that far with Shoesbury?
I don't think so.
No, I think it, I think, uh, he did... Yeah, he did an original proposal. Um... He did a, original, say, survey of what happened and what he, what was going on with the rivers. That was the initial report. The second report was a recommendation, and part of that recommendation happened with Cash's, um, and Duncan's property there, with the, uh...
Flood shoots.
Flood shoots.
Yeah, the flood shoots and stuff. The only thing I see there is, because it took so long, it may have been okay if it was done right more frequent after Irene, after they got done with the river and did the flood, this abatement. But it seems like, um, now that it's sort of made different courses from back then, um, it really, the water's probably gonna, it's gonna, it will go over the south side before it goes o- into those. It goes down that little flood chute, but it, gravity takes it around a corner and pushes it up two feet higher than it is on the north side.
We did ask, when we were all down there, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, that, that in the middle of the river, where that sandbar is built up...
Oh, yeah, it's building up.
And it's spread around. That's initially what caused the north side of that bridge to...
Right, right.
We asked about cleaning that out.
What it was really doing was pushing, it came off our bank again there.
Yeah.
And it just, and it sort of pinballed it toward the north side, where it dug into the, you know, however, you know, the, the more...
Up by seven.
A stable part of the stream, and it, uh, made another channel, you know, going across to the north side.
What does it do where the old bridge used to be up there?
Right.
Seven B.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that where it angled more on your property again?
No.
Uh, no.
To the west more, downstream a little more.
Down through. It, it took out more of that bank, and, uh, then that was there this last couple storms.
Have you seen anything on the Coal River Bridge, in terms of the same kind of stuff?
What you mean Coal River Bridge? On Route 7?
Yeah. No, well, no, way up, as you go up the river.
Not, not really.
Okay.
Don't forget, you got a lot of ledge in here. You got a lot of ledge here.
Yeah.
Right, right. I think, I would think Shoesbury would be privy to, um, wanna go in, in collaboration, um, with a, with a management or a, uh, a maintenance plan.
During Irene, they got hit pretty hard in some spots, Shoesbury.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, even this last storm.
Yeah.
I mean, it took out part of road up there.
Yeah, the second one wasn't as big as the first one, and, but, but the initial one already carved the path.
Yep.
And then the second one followed it. Now, the initial one, those, that, um, um, that berm removal did take it, the, the north side is about ten inches to a foot lower than, than, than the south side of the, of the banking. But, like I said, gravity pushes, going around that corner, pushes that bank two feet higher, you know, the water two feet higher, just from trying to make the turn.
The way, the way the current goes.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's just, it's just gravity takes it to the outside.
Get enough water, you just get out of the way.
I mean, that's...
Well, that's it, and, you know, we didn't see, there wasn't really a lot getting diminished by supposedly this new floodplain that was supposed to be open.
Yeah.
Um, and, and it really, I wouldn't want to see it any higher than what it was, cause it was about six inches to a foot from coming over the south side. And it was still eighteen inches to two feet from going on that inside of the corner of the, of the north side, so... So, you know, it's, I don't think they took into account, when they did their elevations, how it was, it's moving, yeah, around.
Viscinity and current.
Yeah, I'm not a hydrologist, and...
Aren't they, aren't they hydrologists?
Yeah.
Don't, don't they know? They're river people.
Well, yeah, it's, that, that stands to be known, but...
So the first step for now is we're gonna talk with the Fitzgerald Environmental to get a price on completing the plan?
I would recommend that way, only because he's already...
Worked on it.
He, exactly. And actually, when I had a conversation with him three or four weeks ago, when I sent you that stuff, um, he had sent it to me, and he started talking about it, like he was, it was there yes, you know, there yesterday or whatever.
He was there not long after Irene.
Yeah.
See the original.
Yeah.
Kind of layout.
Right.
Prosections and all that stuff.
And, uh, but what the, uh, what our grant organizations can, um, wanna see is an actual plan mitigation in place to...
So once we get this started, then we'll contact Shoesbury?
I, I would actually do it now. I'd do it now, yeah.
Do it now. Find your interest.
Can we send a copy of what we just signed?
This was for, like, immediate construction.
I would, I would, I would maybe send them copies of what Danny sent us.
Yeah.
So we wanna collaborate with them for finishing the pro- finishing the plan that we have?
Getting a plan for Coal River, um, mitigation or whatnot, cleaning.
Maintenance.
You don't wanna call it dredging, because you just don't like to hear it. Just maintenance. Maintenance, there you go.
Yeah, ma- a maintenance plan.
Yeah.
That's what Josh calls it, too.
A periodic maintenance plan.
I don't know what's up towards Shoesbury and the Coal River, but I know down on Otter Creek, we looked at this and took, you took some pictures. The trees that come over there are now starting to silt up, so it looks like a dam.
Oh, yeah, it's...
Down by where the fishing access is down there.
You haven't seen no dam. Go down my cornfields.
Yeah.
No, I, I...
The second, the second storm, the first one broke through and stuff, but the second one indicted all the...
Trees and stuff.
Trees and brush.
Sure, sure.
Gravel and still the riverboat cross cornfield right now.
Yeah, it's just not the...
So I guess I need clarification. Is there a difference between a management plan and a maintenance plan? Are we, are they interchangeable?
Look at, uh, look at Evan's wording in that Fitzgerald's, in, in that, uh, the 2016, um, thing, and, uh, he sort of specified right in there what you, what we really needed to, um, do. And I think we were sort of embarking at contacting, um, Shoesbury, but things got busy, and it was sort of at post-Irene, for like four years after Irene, and, uh, everybody was busy in different directions, so it sort of got dropped. What you'll see is, one of them, one, a couple of his statements give some, uh, um, direction, basically. What you'll see is, is one of them, one, a couple of his statements give some, uh, um, direction, basically.
We can look through that and pick out some stuff during the day, Cash.
Yep.
Okay.
Get some stuff.
That was his name, I forgot his name.
I think it's a long-term maintenance program that sort of specifies what you wanna do, areas you wanna target. And, uh, um, material that you wanna have removed.
Well, the, the term maintenance tends to be the political one that you hear.
Yeah.
Do you have any, uh, report for us, Katie?
Um, I do have a couple of things, um, Rick Welber came in last week. Um, he wasn't able to make the meeting tonight, but he wanted me to bring up his concerns for the speeding in town. Um, specifically Middle Road in that he, you know, wants to see a town-wide speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour. Um, so I talked with Sergeant Cross and the process would be having a speed study done for each of the roads that are not. Um, below that currently, um, and then you have to amend that in our ordinance. Um, currently the speed car is in Wallingford for the next couple of weeks, but Sergeant Cross is trying to get it to Clarendon. Um, Rick also would like to see either the constable or special police officer position back. Um, just for someone to be able to shoot radar and, um, patrol speeding a bit more.
Does he have any recommendations of who it might be?
No.
He'll have somebody for recommendations to start a trade.
Right.
It's the main thing.
But, but when you start doing that, and if, if it includes giving out tickets, that means you gotta pay insurance and all this other stuff now.
That's right.
Before, when he did it, it was a little different when he was on it.
Yeah, that's my point there.
Um, I'm not sure if he will be back to discuss, uh, just as a, I guess, forewarning for you guys. I had a request for the next agenda to discuss how the Sheriff Department spends their hours in Clarendon. Um, so that'll be it next meeting.
And a layout?
Um.
Gonna do it like a spreadsheet?
Well, I, they off, they have reports, so I have a report six months back of what they've been up to, um. The other thing is I mentioned a couple of months back that Cash and I are working on the control of hazardous energy during vehicle maintenance. This is a required document by VOSHA for the Highway Department. So we've completed it, our insurance said it looks good, I have documents for you guys if you'd like to see it. Um, but for the next steps, uh, we just have to get the highway crew together and have a training.
The training is for?
Just to go over this document.
Ah, got it.
They already do this on a daily basis, but you have to have it written down.
Solid, yeah, basically, zero, zero energy, like if you're working on a payload into the bucket behind the ground. It was chalked and, you know, stuff like that.
I understand. Thank you.
My last thing is, um, it was discussed that at the first meeting in September or the. Before the first meeting in September, we'd have a workshop on appropriations policy. So just as a reminder, that will probably be around five, five-thirty. And I'm gonna send out two documents for you guys to review, so it's quicker pace.
Okay.
So that's at the next, before the next meeting?
Yeah, that's, so that's September eleventh.
September ninth, September eleventh.
I'm not gonna be here.
I won't be here.
Where are you heading, Hart?
Do you want your, your next one?
You're not gonna be here either. All right, let's move it.
Okay.
Because I, you know. Like to have everybody present for.
Well, there'll be three of you.
Well, depends. It looks that hard else.
So push it to the next meeting in September, the twenty-fifth one.
And send out a reminder, obviously.
I might be on vacation again.
I might be on vacation.
I may not come back.
I might not get back.
I'm not even gonna go there. Katie, anything else?
That's all.
Okay, and we don't have anybody else. Uh, Cash, you have any concerns?
I've said enough today, I'm good.
Okay. George?
Yes, I got something here, shouldn't take us more than an hour, maybe hour and a half.
The football season hasn't started yet.
I'm good, all right. Um, I was told that the, uh, the schoolhouse. Um. Bob Underhill had gotten together with the, uh, Church and Hall Association and officially got the schoolhouse. Signed over to the Historic Society, Historical Society. Um, they weren't able to do the land because of the. Question of where, who, who owns the land. Um, and from what I understand from Bloomer's letter, that he had written to the Listers a while back. That the town did, there was no evidence that the town actually owned the land, it was still.
I understand.
It was still part of the Clarendon Church and Hall Association. And, uh, from what I understand, that the Church and Hall Association, if the Town of Clarendon determines that. The land doesn't belong to us and it belongs to them, that they would sign it over to the Historical Society. So I'd like to maybe make a motion that states that because there are no. Documents that transfer the land to the Town of Clarendon, that we say that the land. Still belongs to the Church and Hall Association.
All right, is there a second?
A second, yeah.
All right, for discussion, any discussion?
Yeah, there's a little tiny bit of discussion, I'm a little surprised, cause I've made a motion like that about two or three months ago. Which got voted down, so I just thought I'd remind folks of that.
That was.
At, at the time, you were including the schoolhouse itself, which we didn't have.
Any authenticated.
Yeah, and, and, and you wanted us to sign it over to the Historical Society, which we couldn't do.
No, I, I don't believe I said anything about that, I said it needed to be resolved as to who owned it. Not to, not to argue with you, Art, just trying to be clear in my mind, maybe I'm wrong, but I doubt it.
Well, I guess I understand that a different then too.
Well, okay.
All those are motion, has been seconded, we've had brief discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say aye.
Yeah, I'll also say aye, so anyone opposed, obviously not. So the motion carries. Anything else?
Uh, I also had one other concern, but Cash kinda answered that about striping on, uh, Walker Mountain Road, but he said, you said it was gonna be done in September, so.
Yeah, within the state, their, their timeframe.
I have to ask a question on the road that's going over to the transfer station, it didn't take them too long to get stripes there. Other than, it's amazing, isn't it?
It's amazing when you're the state highway.
Yeah, uh, on one thirty-three too.
Yes, how about that?
That was unbelievable. All right, I entertain a motion, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Done and done.